I can't tell if I'm interrupting anybody, so just tell me the title of my end.
You're good.
Okay, so I have a question. I noticed that you're planning on doing about ten thousand or eleven thousand dollars worth of repairs to City Hall or the library. Will you be putting a bid out for that, and if not, who's going to be doing that?
No, we wouldn't, no. On City Hall, those things, the, most of that will be by Public Works, will be the maintenance.
Okay.
So, a lot of the City Hall stuff is, will be Public Works.
Okay, that's good. And on the well, um, the, not the well, the, uh, the tank. When do you believe construction will begin of the tank, since the materials are in place?
Yeah, they were supposed to have been here by now. And the company that sold the well is the company that is assembling, I'm sorry. Company that sold us the tank is the company that will be assembling the tank. So they haven't made it to Oregon yet. So we don't have a date yet.
He said the company that sold us the tank is the same company that's going to be assembling the tank, but they haven't paid it to Oregon yet. All right? Where are they?
I think they're, I want to say that, I want to say their company's southeast, but don't quote me on that.
But they're not here.
But they're not here, that's all I know.
Do we have an estimated time of arrival?
Anytime.
Anytime.
So that would be a no idea.
How does our contract say?
I, I can't, I don't.
Do we have a contract set as a deadline?
Yes, so, so the, um, that would be something that the contractor would be dealing with the sub. So he is a sub to the contractor, and yes, the contractor is already on the hook with us on two hundred and fifty dollars a day past September the fifteenth so far. So, uh, yeah, someone is going, someone is on the hook.
Quick question.
Okay.
The, the tank is, I assume they're preformed, pre-stressed concrete slabs?
No, I don't know that it's concrete, it's, uh... No, the tank is bulked steel.
And are the, how tall was the tank?
I don't recall, so I'm ahead.
I've just, I've been up that road, and it's, I'd be a little scary with a truck, a little bit of metal or concrete filling up there.
No, no, the, the metal's already outside there.
Metal's already there?
Yes.
Okay. So you're just waiting for labor?
Yes, just waiting for labor.
Thank you.
Is that all?
Yeah, so.
Okay, six point three. IGA with Lane Transit District for purchase of refurbished bus.
Okay, so, there were some, so, uh, there were some questions, um, in regards to this that were asked. And, uh, one of them was, how, how far out is this project? So, uh, they are two weeks out from doing a purchase order, and it will be up to a hundred and eighty days for the initial build to happen. And we don't have an ETA yet for when it will be in service. And LTD is going to be getting us the warranty information. But this bus essentially will have a new engine, transmission with applicable warranties. And in regards to any, uh, racks for bikes, uh, it is possible to install the bus racks as aftermarket. So, uh, to add additional bikes. And these were questions by, um, uh, Council Holston. So, that's why I'm reading them, so she can hear them. And so that, those are the answers that I got.
You want to say something?
So, when you say aftermarket bike racks, does that mean we already have those bike racks? Or is this an additional expense?
It would be an additional expense.
Okay, and are there bike racks that are already existing buses that could be used?
I can ask that question.
Okay, thank you. Would you do that?
Yes.
So they're going to have heat and air conditioning in these buses, right?
Yeah.
In this new bus?
Yeah, so this bus is, it's a, it's going to be a refurbished bus from the ground up.
Okay.
Okay, and it will have warranties, it will have air conditioning, it will have, uh, heat, all, all the, all the essentials. And, uh, and Council Forkham had a, because, a question as if we, if we had a copy of the third-party contract, so Pacific Crest Bus Lines is the contractor that, that runs Diamond Express. And, and, uh, Council Forkham, yes, they did send me a copy, so we do now have a copy of the third-party contract so that we have an idea of what their obligations are. It's only about sixty pages.
How many?
Forty-seven. So, those are a couple of que, uh, off-questions off of the, uh, off of the agenda bill. So, anyway, the key issue is we've been trying to get this money for this bus since around December of 2016. And it's been back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. So when they were, those three agencies were able to get the Federal Transportation Administration to loosen up the dollars for this, then I felt we need, we need to jump, and we need to get this, get this bus, because the buses keep, uh, falling apart. And, and we need to get a functioning bus. Also, I, I want to come back just a little. Uh, when the, uh, Chris Zellinger from CTAA was here, he also talked about dial-a-ride. So that's an issue of, of having, uh, transportation in town for seniors and others. So that is another area that he's checking on for us, is, is a dial-a-ride piece for in-town. Because we do have a lot of seniors and others who could use the service. So, ties back also to with the Diamond Express.
Louis?
Yes.
The dial, the dial-a-ride, is that something that we need to, as a city, do anything further for them to continue to consider? Or is that something that they have a hold of and they'll let us know?
A combination of the two. So, uh, CTAA is, is working on a plan, and they will be, uh, coming back to the city back and forth, uh, in regards to, uh, the dial-a-ride program. So, yeah, so we communicate back and forth. So we will, we will be a participant.
Okay.
So. Go ahead, man.
Do I have a motion? Anybody?
Prove an IGA with LTD for a new refurbished bus to be used by Diamond Express.
Do I have a second?
Well, actually.
Okay, so what?
Mr. McMillan?
Okay.
Here we go.
Sorry. I moved the city administrator's mind in, in true governmental agreement with LTD using C-MAG funds for the purpose of a new refurbished heavy-duty bus to be operated by Diamond Express. Second.
It's been moved in second. Any more discussion? Cough at the vote? Council McMillan? Council McMillan?
Josh?
Can you read me?
Uh. It's the, uh, intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement with Lane Transit District to, uh, purchase a new refurbished heavy-duty bus.
Aye.
Says yes.
Council Boblin?
Aye.
Council Afa?
Aye.
Council Carl?
Aye.
Mayor Rowland?
Aye.
Council Fulcom?
Aye.
Council Holston?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Okay. Six point four. So, we, we sent out, we sent out requests for resumes, and so far we've received two. And we're hoping to get one more to look at them, to, to see the list. And all, all of the people so far have been from LCOG.
Lane Council of Governments.
Right.
Yes.
So Lane Council of Governments gave me the list of, of people to reach out to. And so, as the mayor said, there are, we have two, two sets of resumes and, and, uh, hoping to get one more so that those can be presented to the council. But yes, we did go through LCOG to assist us.
Okay.
Did we send out a request to everyone that was on the list that LCOG gave us?
Uh, no, just to the emails, the, the ones that I had email addresses to. And that was, that was three of them. And, uh, Howard Chusler, uh, said that, um, I should start with those three, because those are the most active. And so that's why I started with, uh, the two that the mayor has and, and the third one.
I, I guess I don't understand why we wouldn't just send it out to all of them that were recommended, regardless of whether they have an email or not, that shouldn't be the criteria.
All right, well, I can, I can ask Howard to get me their emails and shoot it out.
And you mailed them an RFP?
Get them a...
Full address.
A full address, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, this isn't really an RFP. On interim, so you just, you just send out a request and ask, hey, are you available?
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
So I have two things. Um, I have, also have a list that I'd like to, uh, answer with your list, if you can just take a minute to do that. And I'd like to know, um, what is going to be the process when we start to get these responses back from these folks?
So, basically, we'll get them, and then I need to get them to you, the council? You go through them, look qualifications, see which one you guys want to, want to pick as your interim?
Can we set up a, a work session and invite them to come and talk to us?
We, uh, we could do that, or just call it a special session.
Special session.
So that you, that way, that way you can take, you want to take action, you can take action.
But I, I think that it would be good for us to have an opportunity to meet these folks face-to-face, yeah?
Yeah.
If we can arrange to do that.
Okay.
And so quickly, uh, here's my list. Larry Patterson?
He's on mine.
Chad Olson?
On mine.
Wes Hare?
On mine.
Jim Johnson?
Ha, haven't got a hold of Jim.
Uh, Ollie Snowden?
Haven't got a hold of him either.
Uh, William Lee?
Uh, no, I have not. So it sounds like our list is very similar.
Similar.
Yeah.
So would you, Gary, would you take that list and, and send him the names?
I will. But I just wanted to see who I have to send. And, uh, we said William Lee, right?
Yeah.
And Phil Messina?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, so I'll send you the email address for Phil Messina, and, did I say William Lee?
Yes.
And, uh...
Jim Johnson?
Jim Johnson, and, uh, Ollie Snowden. And I, my, my opinion is, at this point, it's, uh, premature to, uh, eliminate anyone. I'd like to see them, hear them, talk to them, review their, review their qualifications, and, and actually meet them face-to-face. I'm willing to take the time to do that. And, uh, I don't know how do the other councillors feel about that.
I agree with you.
I am also willing to take time.
Yeah, uh, uh, seems to be a consensus here, Kathy, that councillors want to do that, so Louis, Louis says he'll send it up for us. And so, uh, uh, does anybody on the council have any thoughts about where else we might throw for possible, uh, candidates? For example, uh...
This is this country?
Kathy?
Uh, I have one other name, but I don't have it with me. That was recommended by, uh, an intergovernmental council. Lay it down, and, um, I will get that to you as soon as I can.
To Louis. You have a Louis?
Yep, so I'll send it out.
I'll give it to Louis. My apologies.
So, council, uh, if I, if I may, I can tell you that a couple of those names of the first three you said have interest.
They have interest.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
I'll send.
So they do have interest, a couple, two of those first three that you mentioned. So, yes.
So, six point five?
Ooh, are we done, are we done with that?
Yeah, I think so. So, direction is, is, is contact, contact the rest of the list.
Okay. Okay, six point five is, has to do with the city's law firm. And I'm not, I want to make a motion, but, but they're sort of cascading motions, it's not just one. So I just want to let you know that there's, uh, more behind it. So the first motion I'd like to make is to terminate the city's law firm immediately and replace them with an interim firm, uh, until we can complete the RFP process of all the firms that we're going to be interviewing. So I move that we immediately terminate the city's law firm, giving them seventy-two hours' notice to transfer all open files and open matters to our new interim attorney. Second.
Okay, this, it's been moved in second. A discussion. So who is this new interim? Law?
Come here. Well, uh, I could tell you that. It would be, uh, the law firm of Thorpe, Purdy, Jewett, Ernest, and Wilkinson in Springfield, they're a medium-sized firm.
And that's the one you used to work for?
No, I never worked for them.
Okay, just wondering, just asking.
I wish I would have worked.
No, I, I do know of them. I know several of the attorneys in the firm, uh, they've been around a long time. And interestingly, one of the partners in that firm happens to be building a house in Oak Ridge. But, uh, but I, I, I want to take this one step at a time. The first step is, uh, I want to terminate the current city law firm immediately.
So, could you give me reasons why?
Well, I think we have a contract, and the contract says we can terminate at any time. We don't have to have a reason. But since you've asked me for a reason, I will give you my reason. And that is because I've, I've noticed a pattern of conduct with our attorney that I don't feel is beneficial to, uh, the city. And when I say the city, I mean the council. So that's my reason. Uh, I want an attorney that I can rely on, that I can trust, that I can, uh, feel that I'm getting good advice from them, and that they're representing the city council.
They're not supposed to represent the city council. Their job is to represent the entity, which is the city.
I believe we discussed that the other night.
Yeah, uh... Well, I think I, I think I gave you the research that I had done. And do you have that?
No.
All right. I'm gonna take a moment and see if I can retrieve the, uh, research that I have done regarding who does... Who does the...
So while you're doing that, um, can you...
I can hear you. Yes?
So I, you know, during the discussion phase of this...
Kathy, Kathy, Kathy!
Kathy, Kathy, the mayor, the mayor is, uh, asking you, hold on.
Louis had his hand up, and I...
Well, so, all I want to, what I want to say is, because where we're at, I'm not, I don't want to speak to this because it could be an ethics violation on my part. However, I do believe that, um, I would like, if allowed by the mayor, uh, on this discussion, to allow Susan to speak, uh, so that I don't cross any lines here on this. But I think there needs to be some...
In my capacity is Susan speaking.
She would be speaking in my capacity, because I really can't at this point, because of the, this attorney piece.
You can't speak to this, then Susan can't speak on your behalf.
Mayor, would it be okay for Susan to speak in regards to this city attorney piece?
Two minutes.
I don't, I don't think she should.
Well, I, I don't understand why you can't.
We have, we have, we have a settlement.
Suzie? The settlement, I, I think, and I'm on the same page here, is that because we are in the middle, there is some negotiation still going, and there is, um, litigation, or there is not litigation, there is paperwork that is in the process of being prepared, but is not finalized and has not been signed yet, that terminating at this point in that process probably would not be on the best, in the best interest of the entity of Oak Ridge. Because it's not finalized.
Okay.
Um, next meeting, things probably should be signed, I'm gonna guess. But at this point, it's probably not the best choice for the entity of the city of Oak Ridge.
So my response to that is, uh, precisely because we have a number of legal matters, uh, confronting us. Precisely for that reason, I think we need to change attorneys. Now, as far as, uh, with regard to the, uh, negotiations regarding our city administrator, that's, uh, that's a done deal. And we're waiting for paperwork, it hasn't been signed. But we got an email from Ross today, uh, telling us that, uh, Mr. Boiler's house burned down. And because of that, uh, things were delayed a little bit. But he, Ross, was going to pick it up and review it, and he was reviewing it. He did have a, uh, a proposed settlement for Mr. Boiler. And, uh, because, uh, Mr. Williamson, our attorney, was feeling ill and going home today, he thought maybe it would be next week before we would see the final, uh, agreement. But the parties have already reached, I mean, it's, it's done. But it hasn't been signed, and the name has slipped, it's cup and lip, I understand that. But, uh, you know, we, this is not the only thing that our city, uh, is, is dealing with. We have a number of outstanding issues, and I feel very strongly, very strongly, that we have to have an attorney that represents us. When I say us, I mean the city, as, as manifested by the city council. And when there's a, when there's a conflict, or dispute, or a potential conflict, a potential dispute, between the city, the administration, and the council, is a lawyer's ethical responsibility to come down on the side of the council, not the administration. Being, meaning Suzie and...
It is ethical responsibility to come down on the side of the city. Yes.
On the city, not the council.
That doesn't mean on the side of the council, and it doesn't mean on the side of the administration.
Of course, it certainly does mean the council here.
It does not mean the individuals on this council. Gary, Gary, we had a discussion about this. We agreed to go to an RFP process, and now you're blindsiding this council with immediate termination and interim selection of a sole person that none of us have had time to review your list. Why? Why now? Why today? Why not, why, why not when we were talking about an RFP? Why is it now that you've gone and done independent research, and you have a single name for it? I think you owe it to us to bring us into this loop and not just suddenly pull it out of thin air at a council meeting.
When, when would I present it to you?
Well, anytime before you throw it in front of us and expect us to move on a motion and vote.
I have to do it at a council meeting. It's the only time I can do it.
You can't, you cannot present this idea. This could be an executive session.
No, you can't present this idea.
You can present the idea, but not immediate termination and single or intended approval.
That's perfectly legitimate. This little book out of coordination says it's...
Correct, James. I'm saying that from a, from the standpoint of us individuals making decisions, we have not been offered this comfort of reason.
Then what you need to do is, is let the vote go forward, and you'll be heard. My personal experience with this man is he doesn't work for the city, and he doesn't sure as hell doesn't work for you, me, and anybody else on this council. He doesn't inspire confidence. I've seen him drag his heels.
All right, all right.
It's just not a good, he's just not a good fit for the city at this time. And that's been a...
Mayor Rowland, may I speak?
Yes.
Yes.
So just so that you all, just so that you all are aware, um, this, this V cuts in and out when people speak. So, um, I think I've gotten the gist of what everybody, everyone is saying. Respectfully, Council Boblin, I, I do agree with you in the respect of that, I don't, I think we can definitely have a motion to discuss and, um, consider. Um, we have been faced with other decisions that happen, um, immediately. We make a motion and we want to have a vote. We don't necessarily have to have a vote right now. I do agree that I would like to replace our city attorney. And I, I'm appreciative that Derek Carl has reached out, finally found one that is willing to use us on a temporary basis. I think that, um, that shows some foresight. I also think that we also need to have some respect in the, in regards to having time to consider this and not doing it immediately. So if there is, my two cents would be if there is a way for us to, to take this under consideration, knowing that we will deal with it as soon as we possibly can. I think that's a prudent method that we need to follow.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else? Josh, do you have anything to say?
Um, I agree with Kathy.
Okay. So it's been moved in second. So we're gonna cough at the vote?
And, and the motion is to terminate the city attorney immediately and, uh, request that they turn over all open files to our interim attorney within seventy-two hours.
So we are moving to terminate and...
Well, yeah, I wanted to do it in two, in two separate steps. I mean, it doesn't make sense to terminate if you don't have anybody there to pick it up. Then you leave yourself, just, then you leave yourself without an attorney, so...
But I, I, I just wanted to put my two cents word in, in the fact that you're, again, doing this all on your own.
Right.
And I thought we worked as a council. I thought we were supposed to do this as a council.
What are we doing? We're here as a council.
Oh, you've got it all locked up already.
I have a, I have a proposal for you. If you don't like it, vote it down.
Okay, cough at the vote? Council McMillan? Josh?
Um, nay.
Mayor Rowland?
Nay.
Council Boblin?
Nay.
Council Holston? Council Holston? Kathy?
Aye.
What?
Should I?
Aye.
Council Afa?
Aye.
Council Fulcom?
Nay.
Council Carl?
Aye.
Motion. It's not passed.
Okay.
Six point six, mayor?
Uh, Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
I do, I'm here to find out.
I'm sorry, motion, motion failed to pass, four to three.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the next item is, uh, six point what?
Six.
Six point six.
Uh, I would like to move that we immediately remove the interim mayor, uh, from the position.
Can I stop you there?
No.
No.
Yes, yeah, I can't, in the simple fact that the only way you can remove me now is by a recall.
No.
No.
You were in property...
Well, that's, that's an interesting proposition. Why would you say that?
That's okay. Louis was accidentally, or, or unlawfully terminated.
But they fixed you. They're gonna fix you.
We don't have a motion.
You were in, in the seat illegally by charter, by motion, and by procedure.
Well, my, my motion is to, to remove the interim mayor from the mayor's, um, position. That's, that's my motion, and, uh, I guess I'm looking, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
I'm thinking.
You don't have a choice.
I said I'm thinking.
You can think while you call for discussion.
Okay. Call for a discussion. Why, Gary?
Pardon me?
Why?
Why do I want to remove you?
Yeah.
I don't think you're doing a good job.
Did you say something, Josh? Josh?
Yes, um. I, you know, there's a lot of concerned citizens that say that, um, it, by having messed up on the vote to place you into the mayor's spot is just Robert's rules of order. So then it makes me wonder, okay, how, if it's breaking the rule of Robert's rules, then what all do we have to unchange to fix this?
Well, that's what the motion does. Now, that's what the motion does. It corrects an illegal procedure.
Well, except for the fact that since, since Mayor Roland's been in, we've had several city council meetings and if it was breaking the rule of Robert's rules of order, then everything that she voted on would be null and void.
That's true.
So then we have to go back through and we have to, we have to figure out how we're going to fix everything that was voted on that passed that wouldn't have passed had Judy not had a vote.
No, I, I don't think that's true, Josh, because removing, removing her from the mayor's seat doesn't remove her from the council. So she still has a vote as a member of the council.
Right.
And our vote, her vote is.
Every vote that she took as mayor is null and void because it was in conflict of interest with Robert's rules of order and the charter.
I, I don't think that's true at all. She was properly, she was properly appointed to the mayor's chair by, by the council and she can be removed by the council.
Rule of order number forty-seven.
Mayor, nay?
Yes.
This has been reviewed also.
See another chapter and verse there, Josh?
Um, that, I don't, it is just in the numbers section. If I have my book with me right now, I'd open it up.
All of her votes would have been good until the seat was filled. So at that point, she would still be a member of the council. Once her seat was filled, she officially resigned from the council to accept her position as mayor.
So Kathy, Kathy?
Okay, so if, if September's been filled, we would have to go back in and take some place.
Yeah, I think.
Get to review some things.
September 2nd, 18th, whichever, whatever, whatever date I took over.
So, James, you would be vacating your seat?
Nope, because she officially resigned to accept the position. See, even though this is labeled the council, she can't keep her butt in two places at one time. So to accept that position, you have to resign from the council because you're defined separately.
You know, are you guys all talking or working on talking?
Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. So, you know, I recognize that there is, you know, there is the sense that we would like to put Judy back into a council position and remove her from there. But I think really what we're doing is dancing around the real problem. It is not, it is not easy to do what Judy has done. And, and while I don't agree with everything for the way in which she has done things, I think we all need to recognize that this is all part of a bigger political kind of thing that goes on, is going on, and we just need to take a breath. I agree that I would like Judy to have the opportunity to sit back into her council seat and put someone else as an interim mayor for this next month and a half. But the bottom line is here, for me personally, what I believe needs to be done is not having Judy replaced, but I think what we're talking about is possibly going with the executive session and talking about center. It's not the job she has or has not done. It's a reflection that she has upon the community that I think everyone is reacting to. She's doing the best she can. Perhaps it's not what we want, but I don't think it's fair to make a big hubbub about pulling her off right before the election and before January is gonna roll around. Judy has never been tired to be the mayor, in my opinion. She got stuck into it, maybe for her own good, maybe not. I don't know. But she has done whatever it is she can to do the right thing. We may not agree with it. We may not believe that she's doing it in the way that we, she should do it, in the manner that we would like to have our citizens talk to, but that is up to her to do. And if you don't like it, then your job is to center her, not to remove her.
Okay. Anybody else?
I, I disagree. I think that the proper, of course, the conduct for this council is to remove her from, from the mayor's chair. The council voted to put her there. The council can vote to remove her. She was not, she was not elected by the people. To answer Joshua's questions, there are several Rule Forty-sevens and they all refer to minutes to correct after approval or to amend something previously adopted. So it's basically, he's thinking of a motion to reconsider, what we call.
Well, we have a motion. We probably just might have to go down.
Louis?
May I enter on the discussion for a moment? So, I understand that Council Carl has issue with our current city attorney. Fine. What I would recommend is that we contact a different attorney, I don't care who it is, who does municipal stuff, and present this question, okay? Since you don't trust your current one, present this.
We're talking about the mayor.
Right. Present this question, this, this motion you want to do, then present it to a different attorney and let him look at it. Because this doesn't feel right, so it's better to have, you don't want to use your current one? Fine. We could even get a hold of the one that he mentioned and have him review it. But that's what I would recommend to you, the council. Let an attorney review it before you make the motion.
Gary?
I already did that. I contacted the Lake Council of Governments and if you like, I'll read his response.
Please.
Okay, guys. Again, you went outside the council and did this?
Yeah, I talked to an attorney. I'm allowed to do that, Judy. In fact, Louis just said like we should do it. I already did it. Now you don't want to know what you said?
As a council, he was recommending it. But you've already done it. Go ahead. You've already, already did it. Outside the council.
What it comes down to, what it comes down to is. Another way to read the term vacancy. Vacancy. However, one could argue that the charter does not specifically deny the council the ability to reappoint a different person to fill a vacancy prior to the general election. In other words, the vacancy that was created by the resignation of Mayor Coe, the vacancy remains in place until the next general election. And until that time, the council has the power to appoint and remove various people as they see fit. That's from Philip Thonis, Assistant General Counsel, Lake, Lake of Oregon Cities. And to be fair, there's another way to interpret the situation. It's not just what I said. I don't know what you just said. Because the mayor is part of the council. Well, I just start from the beginning. You ask whether the current interim mayor, who was appointed to that position by the council, could be removed by the council in order to reinstate the council president as interim mayor. Under Chapter Seven, Section Twenty-eight of the Oak Ridge Charter, it appears that the council has the authority to fill a vacancy in the council. Because the mayor is part of the council, that includes vacancies in the position of mayor. See Chapter Three, Section Seven. The question becomes, of course, what constitutes a vacancy? The term is not specifically defined in the Oak Ridge Charter. One could argue that as soon as the council appoints somebody to fill a vacant council seat, the seat is no longer vacant and the council no longer has the authority to remove the person and appoint a different person to fill the position. That argument is further supported by Chapter Seven, Section Twenty-seven, which describes the circumstance that create a vacancy. Notably, under that section, the council lacks the authority to create a vacancy by removing somebody without cause. There is another way to redetermine vacancy, however. One could argue that the charter does not specifically deny the council the ability to reappoint a different person to fill a vacancy prior to the general election. In other words, the vacancy remains in place until the next general election. And until that time, the council has the power to appoint and remove various people as they see fit. Which of these two interpretations of the Oak Ridge Charter is correct is a matter for your council to decide. So what created the vacancy? And if.
Resignation.
Coe's resignation created the vacancy. The council appoints somebody to fill the seat, does not fill that vacancy. Vacancy still exists and can only be filled, vacancy can only be filled by the election which is coming up November sixth.
Not under Section Twenty-eight?
Mayor Roland, may I have the floor?
Yes, Kathy.
Thank you, Gary, for that, for getting that information and presenting the interpretation. I believe that earlier this summer, when I returned from vacation and gave the council an opportunity to correct the mistakes that they had made, and I do view it as a mistake, we failed to do that at this time. I believe now, listening to this interpretation, both of them, I believe it's pretty straightforward and pretty, pretty accurate. I would encourage us all to move forward with this and, and I would be in favor of, of putting, returning Judy back into the council and having our council president step back into the role of filling the vacancy made by the abus of the mayor.
There is no current vacancy in council for her to return to, to her office, taking that position.
No.
Really?
The president.
There would be when Gary moves into there. That would be a vacancy.
Louis?
May I read Section Twenty-eight of the charter, please?
I, I, you know, I really.
Gary, he has the floor.
I object to the city administrator interpreting our charter for us. I'm sorry.
He's not interpreting, he's gonna read.
He suggested that we contact a lawyer and I did that and I read the lawyer's opinion.
Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, you may have the floor.
Filling of vacancies, and this is out of the charter. A vacancy in the council shall be filled by appointment by the council. The appointee's term shall begin immediately upon the appointment and shall continue until the beginning of the year following the next general biennial election and till, and until a successor is qualified and a successor, successor for the unexpired term shall be chosen at the next general biennial election after appointment. They're in a temporary absence from the city for any cause. Office may be filled pro temp. So basically, the way I read this is, once you appointed the person, they're in there through, up to the election, up until you get your new mayor in January.
Well, I disagree with you and so does Attorney Philip Thonis from Lake of Oregon Cities. There's two ways to interpret vacancy, Louis, and you're choosing to interpret it the way you want it to be and I'm choosing to interpret it a different way. That's all.
Well.
And, and, and you're not on the city council, so you don't get to have a vote here.
No, that's, I understand.
Plus, I don't know what law school you went to, but I'm willing to let two attorneys argue it out.
The only thing I would say here is, is he's not your attorney, okay? And again, I still would recommend you, the council, going to an attorney that you hire to review this. That's all I'd say.
I disagree with that. It's gonna cost you more money and I don't want to spend my money that way. I'd rather lose on the vote. I mean, it's only a matter of another couple of months.
But what is the greater good then?
What's that? What's that?
What did you say, Kathy?
I said, you know, so in circumstances like this, I mean, I agree that if council, we talk to the council and the attorney said, and what you were, to determine what's the course of action for the council would, would be, yes, it would be nice if you went on without another, another attorney, but that would then make trees, so why are we, why are we doing that? So in a lot of cases, what we come to is what is, what is best for the greater good? What is best for the greater good of the community? Yes, we can argue about whether Judy shouldn't have been placed in there, whether, whether the council messed up, whether we didn't follow proper procedure. We all have had our fingers in the pot and we're all culpable in this. So what is the greater good? And each of us has to determine that as we look at this. And that's all I'll say. So just consider the greater good, not, not, you know, what your favorite interpretation is, but what is the greater good for our question?
Call for the question.
Mayor Roland?
No.
Council Goldblum?
Nay.
Council McMillan?
Nay.
Council Fulcrum?
What'd you say?
Nay.
Council Affa?
Aye.
Council Carl?
Aye.
Council Holston?
Aye.
Four three.
Four three. Motion fails. Please, Sergeant Susan.
Mayor, council, and citizens, last night we had the Twenty-Fourth Annual.